If they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. The first item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Halevo, please read the consent calendar.
Item one, Planning Commission 2026 Regular Meeting Calendar Adoption.
Is there any member of the commission who would like to pull this item from the consent calendar? If any members of the public wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Do we have any hands raised for public comment on the consent calendar?
Through the chair, we have no public comment.
Great. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
And for a vote, Vice Chair Clafter?
Yes.
Commissioner Shumko?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush? Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And Chair Patel?
Yes.
Great. The next item on our agenda is the public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment period. If there's anyone attending in person who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda, please turn in your yellow slip now. And any remote attendees, please raise your hand now. Again, this is for items that are not on the agenda.
Through the chair, we have no public comments.
Okay, I will go ahead and close the public comment period. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Item number two, 430 Station Park Circle, Station Park Green Specific Area Plan Amendment. We will start with a staff presentation, applicant presentation, and public comments. Members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. The applicant may also be given five minutes at the end to respond to the public comments. Once the public hearing is closed, the chair may ask staff to respond to any public comments, and the commission will ask clarifying questions, deliberate, and render a decision.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I am Stephen Lozarrago, Assistant Planner and Staff Planner for Agenda Item Number Two this evening, a public hearing for planning application number 2025-048 for 430 Station Park Circle, or otherwise known as Station Park Green. The item before the commission this evening is a specific plan and design guidelines amendment and other modifications for the existing Station Park Green specific plant. The project site, circled on the maps on screen, focuses on the structure at 430 Station Park Circle. It is located just north of State Route 92 and is bounded by South Delaware Street, Conquer Drive, and Station Park Circle. The property contains an existing five-story mixed-use building and is within a half-mile of the Hayward Park Caltrain Station. The property is surrounded by office buildings to the south, shopping centers to the southeast, multifamily residential to the north, and single-family residential to the east. The original specific plan, design guidelines, and initial study/mitigated negative declaration was submitted in 2007 and approved in 2011. 2015, a formal application was for the project and modification to the specific plan was approved. The completed project includes one mixed-use building, Building MU1, highlighted in yellow on the plan, and three residential buildings across nearly 12 acres containing 599 housing units, over 36,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial space, a community room, and a 2.3-acre park. The current application proposes to modify the previously approved specific plan and design guidelines for the required office and retail space, which I will go into more detail in the next few slides. Building MU1 is located at the corner of South Delaware Street and Conquer Drive. The orange color on the floor plan shows the 11 retail and restaurant units totaling just over 25,000 square feet, and the blue color shows the two office units totaling just under 8,000 square feet, as well as a 3,034-square-foot community room, all located on the building's ground floor. The rest of the ground floor contains hallways, trash rooms, and a parking garage in the middle for office and retail tenants. The street corner also contains a plaza providing seating, landscaping, and public art. In the years since the project completion, the applicant has had challenges with filling the retail spaces, and currently all spaces are empty. The applicant proposes to modify the specific plan to allow for an increase of office space on the ground floor. Proposed modifications to the required language in the specific plan can be found in Attachment Eight. And the proposed floor plan shows that most of the units in blue would become office space, while the units in orange would be retail-focused along Conquer Drive. The community room would also be relocated to a space facing Conquer Drive as well. Additionally, the applicant would also make improvements to the exterior plaza and pedestrian pathway to help enrich the pedestrian experience in those public spaces. Currently, the maximum range for office space is restricted to 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of area, while retail and restaurants must maintain 25,000 to 30,000 square feet. The applicant proposes to increase the allowable office space up to 35,000 square feet while reduce the minimum amount of retail space to 3,000 square feet. The flexibility of these ranges will allow that property owner to adjust the uses of each space accordingly depending on future market conditions. And since the changes proposed are within the existing structure, there are no proposed changes to the overall building footprint or square footage, and there are no changes to parking. A transportation consultant analysis found that the change would not generate significant traffic impacts. And additionally, since the site is located within a half-mile of a Caltrain station, due to Assembly Bill 2097, there's no parking requirements, or additional parking requirements. Both the applicant and the city performed retail analyses of the spaces at site. The applicant has provided a viability report in Attachment Two stating that overall market conditions and other factors such as lack of clearly visible parking and lack of retail synergy with the surrounding area have impacted how successful retail is on the property. The city-led consultant report can be found in Attachment Six and found that the high cost of infrastructure improvements, particularly in the restaurant spaces, as well as the lack of clear signage have also impacted the project's success. As such, the consultant recommends that the property owner maintain the corner space, Space I on the plans, as a restaurant space due to the infrastructure that was installed and to install improved signage to better attract customers. Additionally, for Space A, a flexible quasi-retail use is proposed to allow for tenant rental flexibility. Staff has worked with the applicant to develop conditions to provide either tenant improvements or rent concessions for potential tenants in the remaining retail spaces. Other conditions allow for the flex of retail and nonprofit space uses in Space A, signage improvements, and enhancing the public areas to create a more active corner. The applicant is also voluntarily providing additional community benefits to neighborhood parks. An initial study/mitigated negative declaration was completed as a part of the original application. In 2014, as a part of the amendment to the specific plan, an addendum was provided as prescribed under CEQA Sections 15162 and 15164. In short, since the changes were not significant, additional environmental review was not required. And for this application, a second addendum was also drafted as modifications were not significant under those same CEQA provisions. Under the General Plan 2040, the project is located within the mixed-use Medium II land use designation. Under the zoning code, the project is located within the San Mateo Rail Corridor Transit-Oriented Development Zoning District, and more specifically, the Hayward Park Station TOD overlay zone. Staff has reviewed the project and determined that the changes are consistent with the codes and policies in these districts and within the general plan. And this project is within the Station Park Green specific plan, which is why this item is being presented this evening. The applicant held a neighborhood informational meeting on March 19th that was attended by 18 guests. And then, one comment has been received in advance of the Planning Commission hearing. The comment was really focused on potential parking concerns in the surrounding neighborhood. In terms of next steps, once the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, this project will be forwarded to the City Council for final action. The City Council is tentatively scheduled to hear the application on November 17, 2025. And if the council approves the request, the specific plan and design guidelines amendment will be effective immediately. This is a very wordy slide. But staff has worked with the applicant to identify modifications to the CEQA finding in the draft resolution. To sum up this slide, there are no significant environmental impacts not previously discussed in the prior mitigated negative declaration. So an addendum is the appropriate document since only minor technical changes are necessary. And this is really just to edit some of the language that you saw in the draft resolution already. So, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the City Council to adopt an addendum to the initial study/mitigated negative declaration pursuant to CEQA Sections 15162 and 15164, and adopt a resolution to amend the Station Park Green specific plan and Station Park Green design guidelines to change the mix of floor area allowed for retail and office uses based on the findings for approval and subject to the conditions of approval, and to adopt the changes I've identified in the previous slide. And thank you. And I can help answer any questions before we pass on to the applicant for the next presentation.
Can we go ahead and have the applicant presentation next?
Yes, please.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you all. I'm Chris Kober, Vice President of Essex Property Trust, the owner of Station Park Green. In addition to working for Essex, my family and I are also longtime residents of San Mateo, as is my brother who lives down the street. I'm here tonight to discuss Station Park Green and a few changes we'd like to make to it. As mentioned, the community consists of 599 homes and over 1,000 people call this community their home. In addition, the ground-floor retail space was built as part of the project in 2018, and that's the focus of our discussion tonight. The residential community has been very successful with over 95% occupancy. And so it's a really desired place to live. As you see... Oh, excuse me, I've got to switch my... You can switch to the next one. Thank you. So as I mentioned, the residential community has been a real success. We've been over 95% occupied in this community throughout its history. We've been over 95% occupied in this community throughout its history. The retail space, by contrast, has not succeeded. Of the 10 to 11 retail spaces, only three have ever even had a retail tenant at all, and all three of them failed, all of them left before their lease even ended. It's been a very difficult time for folks here. We've tried hard with our brokers, we've solicited over 1,400 different operators to try to be here with real, with no real success. And so the result of all of this, as shown by the picture, has been kind of a dark and empty feel to the streetscape along this community. In fact, there have even been rumors and questions of maybe it's like, everybody thinks that the entire community is vacant, and it's not, it's just these spaces along the street that are, and have caused that. Switching to the next side. So that leads us to our proposal tonight. We wish to change some of the retail uses to allow the office instead, and that's the amendment to this specific plan before you today. We're going to keep a few well-located retail spaces along the Concord pedestrian path to the train station, and we will work to help keep those successful. With the change in office use, we Essex are going to move our headquarters into Station Park Green. We are Fortune 500 New York Stock Exchange company, and we are looking for a new home and want to stay here in San Mateo. So, and on a personal note, I'd love the commute just being a short distance away if we can move here. As, as mentioned, as part of our proposal, we're providing financial incentives to some retailers to attract the type of neighborhood-serving retailer that was originally anticipated here, like coffee shops, light food eateries, that type of thing, that could hopefully succeed here and be, and really serve the neighborhood, the train commuters in the area, as well as the workers that will be here in these office spaces adjacent to them. We're also, as mentioned, going to relocate the community room. That was originally constructed as an amenity for the general public. It is free of charge, anybody in San Mateo can use it for events, meetings, and so forth. Its location is around the corner from Concord, and it's really not that visible. In the years that we've had that open since 2018, it's had very minimal usage, I would say probably a handful of times it's ever been used, and so we aim to change all that by relocating it along next to the retail on Concord, so it's at a better location for, for the community. Another part of our proposal is to contribute $50,000 to the city to enhance the neighborhood parks, Concord, Sunny Bray, and so forth, and that money can be used as the city and the Parks Department see fit. So that was our idea to help with some community benefits along with what we were doing. As mentioned, we went to the neighborhood meeting, we also held a, an open house at Station Park Green itself to invite people in to see the community room in our, in our project there and to go over some of the details. There were no real objections brought up at all at either of those forums, so doesn't seem to be public outcry or any issues that we've seen so far. And as you can see on this slide, these are just a couple of the images of what the new space will look like with string lighting and various seating options, enhanced landscape to go along with our plan. So switching to the next slide. Here are a few pictures of the existing community room. Again, as I mentioned, it is free to the public. We are going to recreate this in, in the new space. As you can see, it's got some kitchen area, so you can have a party, you can have a large meeting, there are conference room spaces and smaller office spaces, so it has quite a number of uses, and we're going to work with the city to increase the public awareness of this and have a easier kind of reservation system so that we actually use the amenity that we've provided for the, the community. Switching to the next side then, just to summarize some of the benefits of our proposal, as mentioned, we aim to activate the streetscape spaces with new furniture and lighting and landscape. One example of that is the corner plaza here at Delaware and Concord. We were going to really make that kind of an inviting space for the community to look in, the people to exist there. The string lighting will give that kind of an inviting feel, and people will say, hey, what's going on over there? Let's take a look. This particular space is of interest too, because as the name implies of this building mixed use, it has all three uses adjacent to this plaza. To the right-hand side will be some office space that abuts this plaza, to the left-hand side will be the retail space that we hope to get a coffee shop, and this is also an entry into the residential community, so all three functions go into the central plaza. Also, with this proposal, clearly, the city can help retain and employer, ourselves Essex, with the city, and like I said, we'd love to be here. I did want to point out, as is mentioned briefly in the staff report, there's no new construction happening here as far as new space, this is just reusing up some space that already exists. And in fact, also, parking here is completely provided for within this building itself. There was a comment from the public, and in fact, they reached out to us directly, and were worried about adjacent parking in neighborhoods and so forth. We will not have that, we have plenty of parking in our building itself and intend to make sure that that's not a community issue at all. So with that, we ask for your support with our proposal during the appropriate session. I'm happy to come back and answer any questions and appreciate your consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public comment period for this item. Any members of the public who are in person and wish to speak on this item, please turn in a speaker slip now. Any remote attendees wishing to speak on this item, please raise your hand now.
Through the chair, we have one public commenter via Zoom. I will set the timer for three minutes. Joseph, you can start speaking once you see the timer.
Hello, good evening. My name is Joseph, I've been a tenant at Station Park Green for about two years now, and I've had the opportunity to converse with, sorry, it's Mr. Chris, previously in emails with some concerns about the, the facility here, namely, you know, the failure to provide amenities and retail spaces that the tenants could enjoy. Many of the reasons that I initially started my lease here was because of that. We paid, you know, somewhere around 5% of our annual rent to those spaces, assuming that they would be filled with shops and local businesses that we could attend, and they, they never were. So I hear lots of talk about concessions to new tenants who may open retail spaces. I hear about moving employees into the new office spaces, which I assume is going to save Essex tens of thousands of dollars in rent from their, their current HQ, which is, I believe, over by Park Place. I'm wondering if there will be any concessions, rent or otherwise, to the tenants who currently live here, only because, you know, we, we signed a lease and moved here with a promise of some, some, some local businesses and amenities that we could support, and those have been, you know, not evident, they have not been provided. So I'm curious whether the public in this area really needs more, more parks and more office space and more community rooms, or if what they really need is affordable apartments, and $3,500 for a one-bed apartment is really, I know it's not outside of the, you know, the equivalent local rates for, for apartments, such as the Bay Area rent, but it would be appreciated if, instead of spending more money on amenities, if something could be done for the tenants who live here. Those are all my comments, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Joseph. Do we have any other commenters?
Through the chair, we have no more public comments.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period for this item, and I will open it up to my fellow commissioners for any clarifying questions. Does anyone have questions?
Yeah, I do, I have a couple. I have a question about whether or not the offices are currently leased. That, I know there's limited, there's some minimal office space, and I'm curious if they are also.
No, none of the office spaces that are currently zoned that within this are leased, and they never have been leased.
Okay. Let me just see, I think you answered most of my questions, but I might have another one. Oh, I guess the other question I have is, what was the reason for moving the community room from its current location to Concord?
And perhaps if you could put up that slide again that had the, the floor plan. So, right, I don't know if, can anybody see this on the screen? So the community, oops. I zapped it with my laser. Okay. So the community room is in this area right now, and as I mentioned, it is down here in Station Park Circle, which is, you know, a smaller road, it's really not visible to the public. That was sort of issue number one. We are going to have a retail kind of public-centric area here with the corner retail space. This is where we hope to get the coffee shop, so they can have the outside seating here at the plaza at Concord and Delaware, and then perhaps another retailer in here. This space at the corner is either a retailer, or this is what's been discussed as a possible nonprofit tenant user that might be good for the city. And I will point out that just off the screen here are the exit and on-ramps to Highway 92, so it's got good visibility here. A lot of people come through here to get on the freeway, so this has got good street visibility, and the pedestrian pathway that runs along here goes down to the train station, which is down at the bottom of this thing. So the idea was to put the community room here adjacent to these public spaces, also from our own space planning needs, because we had some office space here, allowing workers to be able to be in a space so they can be with other workers rather than having an isolated space here, an office space over here. We're already cut up a bit with this, with the office suites being the way they are, and we wanted to try to aggregate people so they could more efficiently and conveniently work together.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that did, thanks. I have no other questions.
I have some questions, but, okay. Sorry, could you tell us your name again? Sorry.
Chris Kober.
Chris, okay. Can, which units, I mean, we can put that picture back up, but which units would you, would Essex be planning to use for their offices? All of them, or?
All the ones that are in blue, yes.
Okay.
Or is it blue, just to?
So, just, I'm going to follow up to make sure I understand, Essex would be moving into all of the zoned offices?
That's correct.
Ah.
So we're not intending to lease them out to third parties or something like that. As soon as we work with the city to do our tenant improvements here, we will move into these spaces, myself included.
So can you talk a little bit more about why the contiguousness of them is so important to you, or like is important if you're intending to have some people in different units anyways?
Yeah, so the, the continuity or contiguous nature of it is, again, to try to get as many folks to be able to interact, and it's part of, as people are going back to in-office work, and we're, we're now moving to four days a week in, in office from, from three, and that is a real recognition of the fact that people are more efficient and work better when they're able to interact with each other, and so that's what we're trying to accomplish by having as many people together. Otherwise, in that corner space here, you'd have a group of folks that were kind of isolated. In this way, at least, everybody has a few different spaces that they can be with other folks.
And if our recommendation was maybe to have the retailers, or some retailers, in a different portion of this, would that impact Essex's decision to take this office space, do you think?
Well, it's, it would, we're already developing the plans now to, to do it, and a lot of thought has been put in to get our people in here and so forth, so, you know, certainly we can adjust anything, so what is it, what was the concern would be, because we thought about it carefully about how to try to aggregate, for example, up at the top, these suites happen to be technically able to be attached to each other. There are certain spaces in here, for example, that line right there is a concrete sheer wall, that is an exit corridor right through there, so you can't connect these things to each other. They can all be public-facing things that you get off the sidewalk, but in this particular space, the demising walls here were all of a nature that they could be removed so that we can have people together in this space, and so that was the thinking, is to try to, again, have as many people that can interact with each other on a daily basis, walk over to somebody's cubicle and talk to them in person, that was the intent here. So we thought about it carefully, we worked with staff on, on some of this, and so it's both aggregating all of the retail where it makes the most sense, at least we thought so, takes advantage of the plaza and so forth. So we could consider some other things we'd prefer not to, because we're already trying to do the tenant improvements, we lose our lease soon, and we got to get after this, otherwise, we're going to be out on the street, so.
All right, thanks. Yeah, that, that's helpful context about kind of which of these spaces can be, could be combined and which can't, so thanks for that. There is also a mention in the city's consultant letter about these spaces having like high rents comparatively to the area, and I was wondering if you could comment on, on that aspect of it, why?
Yeah, I'm not an expert in retail leasing, we have another group that deals with that, but quite frankly, we were willing to take, you know, any reasonable offer for this. We've literally had very little interest, very few even letters of intent, and the minute that we start discussing, and we have offered discounted rent and things before to no avail, look, we have no motivation for the last eight years to sit here and not make a cent on any of these spaces. That's, we're in the business to actually rent space and have been completely unable to do so. And so, you know, I will give you an example, I mean, Starbucks left their, their lease early, and they continued to pay their lease after shutting their store, so they weren't even covering their operating expenses, never mind any lease payments, and so it's a, it's a tough place to make a go of it. We, as a result, have worked with city staff to propose some things where we have both tenant improvements to give them what they need to come into these spaces, free, free rent for a period of time to get up and establish, because, look, we have the same objective the city does, or that the gentleman who spoke does, is we'd like to see some retail stuff, we don't want to see continued empty space here, we're going to have workers here, and we have 1,000 customers, the gentleman was one of them, that would all like to see retail here. It's not for lack of trying, we have tried, and this, we really think will give some of these retailers, some workers that can bop over, get the coffee, get the pastry, get the lunch items and so forth, and, you know, so we'll do our part to help support the retail, both financially but also in use with our own personnel there. So we hope that this combination will be successful, so it's thriving, and that those resources are available for the general community as well.
I'm probably commenting more on this later. I find the, I find the Starbucks one a little bit hard to kind of use as an example, because it was 2019 to 2021, so it was like right in the middle of the pandemic, but I see all the other efforts that have been made to fill the retail spaces with other types of coffee shops, et cetera, that have been unsuccessful, but for me, it's a little hard to use that as a comparator because of the moment in time.
And that's certainly a fair, fair comment. You know, I would point that we have tried to fill these before the pandemic, during the pandemic, after the pandemic, and now long after, and it seems to not be very successful all the way through, and, you know, we just lost the last one, Beach Hut, left in September, and wasn't, and they weren't continuing, so it's been very frustrating, and, and again, as you walk down the streets, it's just dead, empty glass, and that's never good for a community feel.
Yeah, definitely. My last question is, there was some reference to what I'm going to call like the infrastructure for food retailers, like mentions of grease traps and saw cutting the floor, which I am not familiar with. Is it, I mean, is it, is it possible for Essex to be able to provide that infrastructure as part of this so that it actually attracts food retailers? Because it, it sounds like one of the main problems is there's this initial capital expenditure that these retailers have to make that maybe just doesn't have a pencil for them because they have to retrofit, or I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm using the right term.
Yes, and that's, that's certainly a, a concern. First of all, initially- First of all, initially, the retail consultant thought that there were true restaurant improvements in these spaces, things like grills and hoods and all that sort of stuff. That was not correct. In fact, we walked through with the retail consultant through all the spaces with the city staff to correct that position. Your point about are there things that would be necessary for any retailer to come into space? The answer is yes. And part of the proposal that we have, which I think is attached to the materials, has both tenant improvement dollars. So those are upfront dollars that will be used to do exactly as you just stated, for whatever their particular use is, whether it's a grease trap, whether it's, you know, particular furniture things to help get them started. So they're upfront dollars in construction to get their business going. I think we proposed, you know, free rent for six months to get them up and establish with our customer base and so forth. So again, we aim to come to the table prepared financially to assist to get them here because it's in our best interest to have some successful retail along with you.
So, thank you. I'm looking at the city consultant's letter and I'm wondering if this is where there, something was corrected. But it says, "All food tenants need to saw cut the floor, which requires nearly 100% price increase from normal concrete floor. With the landlord's tenant improvement allowance at approximately $60 per square foot, this causes an unrealistic financial gap for small independent tenants." So is it your understanding that food tenants would have to saw cut the floor or do we know?
I think when we also went onsite, it was unclear too if some of those spaces already had it installed or not. So there would probably have to be some sort of exploratory work done to even see if it was installed. The consultant's opinion was that, you know, in the last, how many years? It's most likely they were installed, but it was hard for us to tell at the site.
And just another point of clarification, the saw cutting refers to any of this that you'd have to put in some drain lines and so forth in the floors. The difficulty here is that this is post-tension construction, which is a type of construction that's on unstable soils to help keep the, there are metal cables that run through and those are at high tension. And you got to be very careful when you go through those floors. If you hit one of those things, they explode like a rubber band. And so you have to put your things in various spots. So it's just, it, there's a challenge to putting anything in here. There have been certain things that were anticipated and they tried to do some chases and some logical things. There are bathrooms in all these spaces already, which helps. They all have their HVAC in them already. So there are certain things there. And depending upon the particular type of tenant, the challenge of, you know, fitting them out for their business would differ. And so we would work with each one of those individually. If we have a true group that we think can work and that we all like, we will do what we need to to figure out how to help them succeed.
Is the tenant improvement allowance that you're offering, is that $60 per square foot-ish?
That was, I believe that the document, if you refer to is, I think it's $80 a square foot for a couple of the spaces that were unfinished. The Starbucks space, because it already has some of the things. For example, a coffee shop going into that space would have a head start because the stuff had already been put in there from the Starbucks use. So I believe that one was $60, if memory serves in the document. I don't have the document in front of me.
Okay, and I guess this is a question for staff or maybe you as well. But as part of our resolution, I know one of the things is, you know, better signage and things that they commit to. Is this, is the amount of the tenant improvement allowance one of the requirements that we'd be voting on?
Let me look at that real quick.
Was the question whether or not the tenant improvements are a condition of approval?
Yeah, yeah.
They are.
Okay.
In the staff report, they were, in addition, the staff recommended that we really focus on the signage because it's, I mean, it needs to help these retailers. And in fact, one of their conditions of approval is that we pre-wire all of the metal awning structures that are in front of each retail so that they're ready to go for an electrified sign for a retailer. They don't have to go through that capital improvement. We will pre-wire those things with conduit so that they're set to go for whatever retailer comes in. Obviously, we have to work within the constraints of the city's sign ordinances. But that, I believe, allows for some decent signage to help promote these businesses.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's helpful. Okay, I mean, I think to be transparent, I guess what I'm kind of getting at is whether there can be a larger tenant improvement allowance than what's contemplated to really try to make sure that retailers are attracted to the space. Just in light of the city consultant's comment about maybe $60 per square foot not being enough. But I heard you say it could be as high as $80. And I'll look at the resolution when other people ask questions. But, but yeah, that's kind of sort of what I'm probing, I guess. Thanks. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Clafter, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I think this is probably for the applicant. So the background on this question is the planning commission actually had gotten an email last year, I think it was November of last year. And there was a resident, a San Mateo resident, not a resident of Station Park Green, who had been trying to rent the community room. And what it all came boiled down to was that they were able to get access. I think they actually got in touch with you directly. And the city clerk sort of summarized that there was going to be a reservation system set up for the community room. I was curious if that had been put in place yet.
Well, what, given the quote, "demand," if you will, which has been sparse, our system to date has been that you just email thestationparkgreen@essex.com and our staff onsite reserves a room for people, set up the keys and talk to them about the logistics and so forth. And so that was, that was promoted at the neighborhood meeting as well as the open houses as the process. And again, we have received virtually no inquiries there. That being said, going forward, if we do have a demand, we will set up in there automated and online systems and so forth. Happy to investigate. I'm not an expert at some of that technical type of stuff. We've got groups that will do that. But, you know, as part of the ongoing process, if we start to actually have demand, we can have a system whereby people can, you know, reserve online and check it the way you might do any other kind of reservation.
It's open to members of the, it's open to residents of Station Park as well, of course, right?
It's any person who lives in San Mateo, so they are residents and so they can do it. In fact, the city has had a function, I believe, at the, at the facility as well. So it's anybody in San Mateo, free of charge, can use the space. And that could be a business use, it can be a party use, it can be whatever they want.
Yeah. And then what is the, if the, if the community room ends up being moved, what's the kind of idea you might have on timeline for that being ready to be open again?
I think we will probably, because you raise a valid point. I mean, we will be, because we have to use the new space to get our office in there and we're in a deadline to get people in there and so forth. So we will get started as soon as we can on the, on the new improvements. We're estimating, you know, a few months of working through the apartments with our tenant improvement drawings. We would hope to start construction, call it of March of next year. And if we can get the community room done before we ever have to go into our offices, then there'll be a limited amount of downtime between it. So there'll be a few months where it'll be out of commission. But other than that, as soon as we can get the new one open and then the reservation system or however we, you know, reserve the space, we'll get that back online as soon as possible.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Shumple, do you have any questions?
Yeah, you've, you've answered the majority of them for me. But just to, if you could shed some more light on how you're going to attract the best tenants going forward? Because it seems like you guys have gone through 1,400 possible tenants. And I understand that you're going to offer assistance with the TI build out and reduced rents. In regarding that, will the reduced rents be tied to a definite lease? Or is there a sunset clause to when that reduced rent would be expired?
The dilemma, you know, to be frank, we'd be happy to help economically with a group that comes in that's going to stay there. What we don't want to do, back to the tenant improvement thing, is like, hey, somebody comes in and says, "I want to build a bear business here and like, I want to, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of stuff to have my, build a bear factory in here." And that we know it's not going to succeed and it's not even something that the community may even want. And so, you know, for the right use that we can really get in there, you know, we're willing to work with them. And, you know, whether that's a reduced rent throughout time for market rent or whatever it takes to help get them succeed. Because frankly, some revenue is going to be better than no revenue and some use is going to be better for us as the, both as the community of residential folks there as well as the office users. So it doesn't serve us any use whatsoever to continue to have this vacant space. That being said, we obviously can't promise that we have an outside business, you know, to come and do. You know, they make their own decisions, obviously, but we'll, we'll do what we can. And the problem about being more specific than some of the TI stuff that we put in there is it really depends on each use. Somebody may need a bunch of TIs, somebody else may need rent help. And so we'll work and make those things adjustable. But we're here to tell you that we're going to be a partner in this to make it happen.
Got it. I think that's all my questions.
Thank you. I have a few questions left on my list that haven't already been asked by my fellow commissioners. Starting at the top, can you remind me, what is the total square footage of the space that is zoned for retail today? I think I read in the report it was about 30,000 square feet. Is that right?
I think that's right.
Yes, it's around, it's, it's at least 25,000.
25,000. Okay, great. Was there any kind of analysis done either by the city or by Essex on how many residents you would need to support 25,000 square foot of retail from like a business standpoint? I know we've done analyses like that on our downtowns. I was curious if any kind of analysis like that has been done here.
As far as I know, I don't think analysis was done on that.
Our retail consultant focused mostly on the design and the location of the spaces. And just the design and the location is kind of subpar for leasability.
Okay, thank you.
The range is 25 to 30.
Thanks. My next question, a little bit more tactical. We've had projects come to us before, both doing office on the ground floor to begin with, or we've had a previous project come in asking to convert ground floor retail to office. And there was some discussion on the planning commission at that time, I'm looking to Margaret, about the windows on the ground floor office and wanting to make sure that we don't have frosted or opaque windows that kind of present this visual wall to the public. That, you know, we want some permeability to make the space feel lively and vibrant. There was also questions about guidelines around trash and storage to make sure those things weren't being stored by the windows in view of the public. So I was curious if any of the design guidelines that have been discussed as the Station Park Green design guidelines talk about the windows on the ground floor? And if we're converting the use from retail to office, do we have any requirements around maintaining like line of sight to the street?
The requirement, the guidelines do talk about windows and walls. And we actually have a condition of approval as well to work with staff to make sure it's not just blank walls when they do do their tenant improvements for the office spaces as well. In order to create a better interaction with the new, our revamped plaza and to interact with the hopefully future cafe or whatever business that goes there. So that is something that we have thought about and will address.
And we've started to work on some of our space plans. And in a lot of cases, there are sort of walkways along the windows so that we have, the cubicles are a little bit off of the windows so you don't have somebody coming and staring at what somebody's doing at their desk. And so you don't need the frosting and that type of thing. By the same token, we don't have anything stored up against the glass so that you get kind of that interaction both visually in and out of the windows. So we have the same goal that you do and we'll work within the guidelines.
Those were the only two questions I had left. So I'll go ahead and open it up to my fellow commissioners for discussion or comments.
Should I go first?
Sure.
Okay. Great, thank you both for your presentation. Very helpful and very clear. And as Commissioner Patel just said, yeah, we've seen, we've had seen requests for very similar things, very similar requests to this in the past couple of years, post-COVID. I mean, I think it talks about it in the packet that, you know, the nature of retail has changed a lot. Not just, I mean, some of related to COVID, some online shopping, you know, just the nature of retail has changed. And so you really have to have kind of the perfect condition, I guess, to, to find it, to make it work. We've seen struggles on buildings that have, you know, probably better conditions. And still they struggle to find that, to find a good tenant for retail. But it is something that, you know, we all, you know, want to see as these, you know, active, you know, pedestrian oriented spaces, active retail. And this issue of, you know, not getting a blank wall or a cubicle against the glass or something like that and getting, you know, maintaining some semblance of an active space between the pedestrian outside and the, or the, not necessarily pedestrian necessarily, but the view from outside to inside. So that's, I think, something that's important. But, but I think, you know, what we, in what we talked about on the last project that you and I are probably thinking about, as per that previous project, it makes sense to me to allow this change because, you know, empty, dark retail spaces are worse than, you know, it's better to have an office space and a space that's being used, a space that's being, you know, part of the community in some way or another than to have an empty, dark retail space that's not being used. So I, I see no problem with it. I think it makes a lot of sense. Couple other comments. Contiguous office spaces make sense to me. I was curious to hear why, but then, you know, it's clear, yeah, you're trying to get bigger, bigger chunks for the office space, so you can have a bigger tenant space there. I think that makes sense because there are some amenities probably that each individual space would need. You know, a break room or a copy room or a printer room or, you know, maybe it's restrooms or waiting areas or whatever it is. But, you know, a whole bunch of different smaller spaces, you kind of have to add additional, those kind of unnecessary spaces, like, like an extra copy room when you don't really need that. So it makes sense to consolidate your spaces as much as possible. I think that the downside of that is that the community room is not necessarily an active space like a retail would be, a retail space would be. You know, there's probably lots of times when it is going to be not in use. I like the images that you showed. And I think that if there's at least some, you know, interesting space within there, hopefully, hopefully it'll also start getting used. And that, you know, makes sense in terms of where it's, where it's located. So I think the continuous spaces outweigh the, any issues with the community room being over on the, on Concar. So yeah, I don't take any exception to this. And I think we should recommend to city council to approve this proposal. And that's my comments.
Commissioner Clafter?
Yeah, so I've driven by Station Park many times. I've, you know, observed the comings and goings of the few tenants. And it wasn't until I was reading all of the information that we provided that I realized that there was even parking kind of tucked back in there. And I think immediately became apparent why it's been such a difficulty for some of those businesses to attract customers from beyond the immediate vicinity. And, you know, I think actually, you know, if, if there was a large office population moving in, it actually might increase the viability of a deli or some other similar business in the remaining retail storefronts because people do need to have lunch and, you know, with the, with the train station there. And, you know, hopefully people will continue to increase their train trips. That might also increase the viability of the remaining retail over time. I definitely agree with some of the other comments. Empty storefronts don't do anybody any good. And regarding the community room, you know, I should realize I had a kind of a partial question I had forgotten to ask about the community room, which is, are there, are there separate? which is, are there, are there separate community rooms specifically for residents also within the Station Park? Yeah.
Yes, there are separate amenity spaces that are just for the residents there. There's a gym space, there is a club room, which they can rent out for their own parties. So they don't need to use this space. There are a few people that have used it kind of as a business work from home type space, but that's about it. But they are technically, obviously, as members of the public allowed to use it, but they have not, they have used the internal ones. But there are internal spaces as well as this community space.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that makes a lot of sense. They don't have a need to go and use this, request the use of this specific space because they have other spaces. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
And on the issue of, you know, kind of visibility and so forth, the community room, you know, one thing that we could do is, you know, make sure that we have at least some lights on in these spaces that in the evening, when you drive by, say, hey, that looks like an inviting space. It looks more inviting as somebody's walking down, even if somebody's not there. We have to, obviously that uses some energy. And I always think you should illuminate some things because they look pretty. And we're going to spend some money to make them look nice, as you saw in the pictures. So having a light that's on there that people can see that makes them feel a little safer walking down the Concar thing, that's certainly something we can work with staff on to, to make as part of the design.
Yeah, I was going to propose that, but I wasn't sure if that was viable.
I was thinking of kind of a similar, so a parallel would be like the POPOs program up in San Francisco where they had a similar issue. They were requesting or requiring developers to construct public open space on the rooftops, rooftop gardens, other things within their properties. And there was not adequate signage at times. They weren't advertised correctly and people weren't aware that they were there. The developer is being required to maintain these things and no one is using them. And I think they solved that problem by creating a website and promoting it. So, you know, maybe the solution to getting the community room, you know, more actively used is to, maybe the city should add, consider adding some information on the website. You know, a Google search turns up the community rooms available at the library and on other things, but there was, you know, there's no discussion of this particular amenity. And I think that would make a big difference there. But that's obviously something for, for us to consider and not necessarily something that the applicant is able to do. And I agree with a lot of the other questions, comments about windows, trying to keep things visible, because again, getting those storefronts filled, getting them active, making that section of street feel more inviting. And I think that's all my comments.
I'll go. I think adopting this resolution makes sense as well. I frequent some of the shops in the adjacent area. My favorite grocery right around the corner from there and go there a lot. And when you pass by, I agree that an active office would look better than dystopian closed office space, retail space that what we currently look at when we drive by. I like the community benefits, the contributions to the parks and also the community room. Hopefully, the city residents are more aware of that space and get to utilize it as an amenity provided to them. This project doesn't affect parking for local residents and adjacent communities. It doesn't affect traffic. And it just, it just makes a lot of sense to me. And I'm in support of this, adopting this resolution for this project.
Yeah, I agree with all of the, the comments despite my tough questions. Yeah, I think it, it makes a lot of sense. I also frequent a popular grocery store right there every weekend. So very familiar with the area. And I also, I drove in there for the first time when, after receiving the agenda. I didn't even realize there was park space in there, even though I've driven by there 1,000 times. And I definitely didn't realize there was parking. So would strongly encourage not just signage improvements for the retailers, but also maybe signage improvements related to the parking that's available. I also think it's really wonderful that the office space will be filled right away. I mean, that's critical as well. Like it's not just you're converting and then looking for office tenants. It's you're converting and then you're filling the space right away. And it is important to keep our San Mateo businesses in San Mateo. So it's, it's nice that Essex will be staying in San Mateo. And I did go back and look at the, reread the resolution. Thank you for sort of directing me to the condition of approval related to the tenant improvements. And I saw that that was in there. So that, I think that will be critical to, to attract retailers to the space is to make sure that, you know, there's that incentive to come there because reducing the number of retailers is also reducing that synergy, that retail synergy. So really making sure that, yeah, you're incentivizing them. But yeah, otherwise I think, I think it makes sense. And thanks for your presentation.
All right, I actually realized I have one more question as we were talking. So our public commenter mentioned that 5% of rent is going towards the amenities. Can you perhaps clarify what that public commenter, I believe his name was Joseph, was talking about?
I'm not exactly sure. There's not some charge or anything of that. I think he's just deducing that some part of the rent must be for the various amenities and so forth. And I can assure you, no promise has ever been that we can deliver retail because we can't. And we did as part of the original specific plan guidelines when we built the community. But I believe, I can't speak for him directly, but I think he's just imputing some sort of value to himself in that regard.
Great, thank you. So I have, I have a couple of comments. One is on just the community space in general and mentioning that it was underutilized. And I was thinking of the same email that we got last November, which was from a resident who had tried to book the community space and had tried to book it by going in person and talking to the leasing office. And from the email we got, it sounded like the people in the leasing office had told her, you can't book that community space. It's not open to San Mateo residents. And that, that community member had tried multiple times and was told no multiple times and looked up the conditions of approval and then emailed us and said, something's wrong because the conditions of approval say that it can be booked by the community, but I've tried to do it and, and they're saying no. So I wonder how much of the lack of utilization is perhaps people trying to book it by going in person and then being given inaccurate information. So I wouldn't necessarily assume that it's poorly utilized because of its location. I think it probably is a combination of lack of advertising and potentially inaccurate information. I've been to a handful of events in that community room and in the club room. I've actually spent quite a bit of time at Station Park Green. And the community room is lovely. And one of the things that I like about where it's placed today is that it faces the interior of the complex. And it's on a quieter road, like not many cars come down that access road. And the times that I've been to events in that community room, we actually prop the doors open and had this nice like indoor-outdoor breeze. And it felt very connected to the community at Station Park Green. And when I think about the plan that you are proposing to relocate or consolidate the retail along Concar Drive and move the community room to Concar Drive, I think my concern is that Concar Drive, I think southwest, west of Delaware, it feels like an extension of the on-ramp to 92 because that's where that road goes. And I used to go to that Starbucks all the time. I think one of the best things about that Starbucks was its proximity to Concar Park, which is my kid's favorite park. So I'd always go to the park, grab a coffee, go back to the park. It was really great having a coffee shop right there. But that road does not feel warm and inviting to any kind of outdoor presence on that street. Cars are racing the light both directions. They're racing the light to get off the off-ramp during rush hour and out into Delaware and Concar, or they're racing the light to get in, to get on the highway. So I worry for any kind of food retailer or any retailer that wants to have that like vibrant streetscape plaza as just, as sort of shown in these drawings, that it's going to be really hard on that road because of how busy that street is. I've eaten at Beach Hut Deli many times. I've sat in that outdoor plaza. And especially if you're there at dinnertime, it feels like you're eating on a busy road. I think street front retail is more successful when it's on roads that don't feel as big or as busy. And so I, I kind of wish that you were thinking about locating the retail along Delaware because while Delaware is also four lanes at that point, I don't see the cars behaving quite so aggressively when they're coming down Delaware. And I think retail might be more successful on that street. Whereas for the office use, I think people are mostly spending their time in the office. They're not sitting on the sidewalk. So it doesn't matter as much to have that permeability to the sidewalk. So I think that is probably my one major comment I have is, is I wish the retail was on Delaware and then the rest of the office was along Concar.
To the chair, may I say something about that? I was wondering that too, but there's the advantage, the way it's planned, there's the advantage of people walking from the train down Concar to either their neighborhood or Trader Joe's or favorite store or, or whatever. So there's potentially foot traffic along there from the train.
Yeah, I think that's a good point too. And, you know, I'm not saying that that's enough to make me do not recommend doing this. I just, I think that's going to be an added challenge to getting retailers in that space on that road. It feels, it does not feel like an inviting road. You wouldn't, no cars would stop on that road, right? Like, not that they could anyway, there's no parking, but it's, it's a road to the on-ramp.
Yeah, through the chair also, you know, just that, I mean, there is retail space on, on, we're here discussing the fact that there is retail space on Delaware today and that that retail space has not, yeah.
I completely agree. I just, I'm worried that you're picking the most challenging part of the site to continue to try to attract retail to. Because there were, the spaces that were occupied were Beach Hut Deli, Starbucks, and then the gym, and the gym was on Delaware. So, yeah, I think, I think the other comment I have that, the reason I asked about how many residents, if there's any economic analysis to how many residents would be needed to support 25,000 square feet of retail is because we have had applications come in for quite a lot of development in that area between the Hillsdale Caltrain project, the Concar Passage project and the Bay Shore Commons project. And I did initially like that there is the flexibility here that in the future, as the market conditions change, that some of this use could revert to retail. Because I think over the next 10 years, there's a possibility that we have a lot more residents in that area that could support ground floor retail. But I do think it makes me a little bit nervous. I didn't realize that Essex was going to occupy all of the office space. It feels like turnover is more possible if those spaces are being occupied by seven different companies than if they're being occupied by one company that owns the building. Seems less likely that, you know, if it's working out real well for you, that those uses might change in the future. So I am a little bit concerned about as that area grows and develops, are we, are we effectively cutting off the ability for that space to be used as retail space in the future?
I believe the application will allow for either use. You know, one could foresee in the best case scenario for, for the, for Essex. So they, maybe they grow, they outgrow the space. Maybe in a number of years, the conditions, as you say, there are a number of, you know, potential projects which are coming in into that area. And maybe the retail conditions will have changed by that time. I mean, it's, it's very difficult to predict how things will change. It seems like, it seems like the, there is a possibility that retail conditions will improve. So, I mean, it'll be interesting to see these, these retail spaces here along Concar, you know, what, what ends up happening. Once there's also a, a stable, you know, daytime population that is going to need food.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree. Because I do think it's, maybe my perception of this is off, but it seems kind of like a windfall for Essex because they're not paying any rent on, in this, these offices that they're going to be moving into. So I see what you're saying about it being maybe less likely to, for them to turn over certainly than anyone else. How unlikely it is for them to turn over ever, I think, is kind of a hard, hard to put your finger on. I personally don't think return to work is going to last. So maybe they'll go back to work from home for a few days a week, but, you know, who knows? But I also think, I'm not super familiar with Concar Passage, like, you know, all of the details of it. But I do think they're also adding retailer, retailers there. So, you know, to the extent you're saying that, that development may then attract the need for more retail while it's adding in some. And, you know, I think that's a long time.
I see our attorney wanting to pipe in.
Through the chair, Mazurin Bakary, Assistant City Attorney. We're just looking at the use, not the future tenant for the office. Just a friendly reminder that we have to judge this based on, on the use of, and that's amended to the specific plan regardless of the future office tenant.
I wanted to respond to what Commissioner Bush said about, you know, sort of like a windfall or whatever. But I, I mean, I see that as a, you know, positive. Like I, it's currently not rented. And now we have, this is sort of like an easy decision. Like there is an opportunity to have occupied space now. It's not just a maybe. Whereas the project that Commissioner Patel and I remember, where we voted to allow, or we recommended to City Council maybe, to allow to, to change from just retail to the option of office and retail. I don't think that office space has, has, you know, come about either. So, you know, in this case, it's like bird in the hand kind of thing.
Yeah, I, I agree that any use is better than no use, for sure. And I also agree with Commissioner Bush's comment that it's important to keep our San Mateo businesses in San Mateo. I, one of the questions I had asked staff actually before this meeting was, is there any history of doing a change in use like this, but tying it to a time period, right? Saying like, you can have this change of use for 10 years or 15 years and then it reverts back. And the answer was no, that it's quite difficult to keep track of those sorts of conditions. And so it's generally not recommended. So I'll, I'll add that I threw that out there as a possibility, but it doesn't seem very feasible.
Yeah, and, and I agree. I was, yeah, getting to the point, I think that there will be other retail uses, other space for retail at the time at which Commissioner Patel seemed to suggest more retail might be needed.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah.
Those were all of my comments. Can we get the language back on the screen? This seems a little bit tactical to include in the resolution, but could, would staff be able to note in our recommendation to council that we, we would suggest or recommend or, I don't know what the right word is, that they consider including this asset in, on the city's website as a community asset? Like to Commissioner Clafter's point, you can find that the rooms at the library are available for, for booking, but.
I don't think that needs to go in the motion, but maybe we could.
I meant like in the notes or in the, yeah.
Yeah, we can pass that on maybe to the city clerk that I think, who I think is trying to compile a list or as a work item, basically.
I would, I would note that in the same email, which kind of closed that discussion last year regarding the community room, there was a notation that staff was looking at as creating a page to, you know, list all of the different community rooms and other types, other similar venues all over town and compile them into one list, which I think it just sounds like a great idea, you know, independent of anything we're talking about this evening. And it would be great to see that materialize by the time, you know. And it would be great to see that materialize by the time, you know, pending this decision here, by the time, you know, this community room, if, if it gets moved, then it reopens. So.
And just confirming that in the conditions of use, it discusses maintaining a reservation booking system to support community access consistent with city requirements. So the suggestion that those city requirements sort of include that it be, you know, available in a particular place.
May I just suggest that in any motion that comes forward, should you all choose to recommend approval, that we incorporate into the motion, the amended SEQA finding that was on the prior slide, if that's the commission's desire.
So will we do that, there's a recommendation to do that as we adopt the recommendation on the screen, adding also a third, adopting the SEQA finding?
Yes, as on that prior.
Oh, you need a motion. I'm sorry.
I was waiting for you to call.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to make the recommendation that I will read here, plus adopting the SEQA finding.
I second it.
Hello, could you please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clafter?
Yes.
Chair Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schumpel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. I am going to go ahead and close that item. The next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Do we have any reports and announcements from our staff or the city attorney?
Yeah, hi. Joanna Winter, Planning Manager, just wanted to let you know about some upcoming items. On the city council's docket, next Monday, November 3rd, they are going to be doing a study session on the Hillsdale redevelopment project. So if you are interested in tuning in to that, just note that that is happening on the 3rd. The city is also, they're also going to be hearing about the proposed economic strategy. So that might be of interest to you as well. And then for the planning commission, the November 10th meeting, which was scheduled for Monday because Tuesday is Veterans Day, we are looking at potentially canceling that. So stay tuned potentially for an email about that. And so the next meeting would be, because the later one is canceled due to the Thanksgiving holiday, I believe, yeah. So the next meeting would be December 9th. And the items that we are anticipating on the agenda for that are the Carey School and their proposal for an early childhood center. And then also the ADU ordinance that you all reviewed at the prior study session. And we've received feedback from state housing and community development on, we'll be bringing that to you. And this room, I think was mentioned before, is going to be undergoing some major renovations, including improving her technology and seats that people won't fall through. So that's going to be happening December, maybe into January as well. But, so the December 9th meeting is going to be held at the, the main library in the Oak Room.
So did you say both of, both of the November meetings are canceled?
Likely, we will, we'll send out emails.
Okay.
Do you know, on Monday for this study session, is that going to be a special meeting prior to the normal, normal city hall meeting, city council meeting, or is that during the general meeting?
I believe it's during the general meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any announcements from our fellow commissioners?
I would just like to wish everybody a happy Halloween.
I was just going to note, I'm going to the training tomorrow night, if anybody else is going, but I don't, I don't think anyone else is going. I didn't see your names, so.
I'm, I'm signed up for that.
And there will be two of us from the planning staff joining you as well. If anyone is interested, you might still be able to get on the list, but if you are, let me know and I can try and help with that.
Great. I think that's it. I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.